Highlights.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Ozark City Hall. We're glad you're here for the Board of Aldermen meeting and engaging with your elected officials. Listening to perspectives of city residents, business owners, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before the meeting begins, let's review our rules of order. These ensure the meeting is orderly and efficient while allowing everyone who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. There are two opportunities for you to speak: during the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion of the meeting, and during public discussion of new bills and resolutions. During the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion, anyone who signed up at the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday before the meeting can speak to aldermen about the topic they specified. Now, in the public discussion of new bills and resolutions, that allows you to give comments for aldermen to consider before they make a decision. Anytime anyone is speaking, the following rules apply. First, only one person should speak at a time. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your comments until it's your turn. Second, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Third, you must first provide your name and address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. These forms are provided near the entrance. You also must state your name and address to the Board of Aldermen using the podium microphone. Fourth, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and aldermen. Finally, all speakers have five minutes. A digital timer will show you the countdown. The light will change from green to flashing yellow when two minutes are left. It will stay yellow at the one-minute mark. Your comment time is up when the light turns red. The mayor or alderman may have additional questions for speakers after this time limit. Occasionally, the board will invite someone to make a presentation at the meeting. This is only to give information to the board about a specific topic. These presenters will have no time limit on giving their information. This meeting will be livestreamed and recorded with video and audio unless there are technical difficulties. The use of cell phones or other devices is discouraged during the meeting. Please silence your phones right now. Again, thank you for being here and engaging with the city of Ozark. The meeting will begin shortly.
Real call, please.
Alderman Aiken?
Here.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Galloway?
Here.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Here.
Alderman Metcalf?
Here.
Alderman Snyder?
Here.
We have five aldermen present. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. First, our business is we'll be looking at our minutes from our two previous meetings. The first one is from April the 17th. Are there any questions or corrections that need to be made regarding April 17th minutes? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve those minutes of April 17th. Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is that we approve the April 17th, 2025 nonlegislative session minutes. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was second by Alderman Snyder. All in favor voting on the motion to approve the April 17th, 2025 session minutes, do so by show of hands. And that does carry. Now, we'll draw attention to April 21st, 2025 regular session minutes. Any questions or corrections regarding these minutes? I'm not seeing movement. Is there a motion that we approve as printed?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we approve the April 21st, 2025 minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we approve the 202... Excuse me. Motion to approve the April 21st, 2025 regular session minutes. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was second by Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting on the motion to approve the April 21st, 2025 regular session minutes, do so by show of hands. And that does carry. There's no similar matters tonight, but we do have one scheduled guest at this time. Chris Russell, the CEO, President of the Ozark Chamber of Commerce, is coming to address this.
Guys, welcome and thank you. Thank you and let me have a few moments here tonight. Okay, lots been going on in the Ozark Chambers. A lot of you are very, very aware of. I didn't get a chance to come to the last meeting and kind of give you an update, Showcase Ozark, but honestly, it was so fresh. I'm kind of glad that we waited till tonight because we did send out a survey to the vendors to kind of get some feedback and overall, it was very positive. We ended up having 73 booths plus the plant sale that was happening inside of Showcase Ozark on that Saturday. Overall, the reviews coming back from the vendors, the majority of vendors ready to chamber. It was really cool. So you send this spreadsheet, you send this form out, and you have all these questions, right? And then what you do is you take the answers. It's an Excel spreadsheet, clean up the columns a little bit, and you send it to ChatGPT, and you say, please give me a review or an overview. And it spits out the most amazing information. So don't think that I went and did all this research. I cheated. I'm not gonna lie to you. I cheated a little bit. However, it ended up really analyzing the data really well. Very highly satisfied about the foot traffic. I think the foot traffic could have been more. I want more for Showcase Ozark. I think it was good. We had probably the highest record of number of, well, compared to last year, I'm not sure since 2019, but of the punch cards filled out. So that was good. So people were participating. We've still got a few prizes left, but that went really well. So that was very well appreciated. Vendors felt the event was well promoted across social media and the community, and thanks to the city of Ozark for their assistance with the banners. In addition to that, we did have a couple of areas of challenge. They went a little bit different in the snacks and areas for the vendors and for breakfast, but they thought communication was good, parking was good. Nearly all the respondents indicated that they would likely return in 2026, and we actually got a score of about 4.6 on the overall event for the vendors. So the vendors seemed to be very, very satisfied in the way that it turned out, and thanks to all of our volunteers and our helpers, and of course, everybody who participated and made that happen. Big thanks to the Ozark Schools for opening up that building for us. I think it's a really good venue. We got some feedback about the venue as well. So very excited about the overall outcome. Bigger plans for next year, though. As funny is that a couple of the comments were, how do we get vendor networking time? And I was actually just this last weekend, the weekend before, or the week before, I was at a Missouri, Arkansas, Kansas, Oklahoma annual conference, and that's a Chamber of Commerce conference that's with those chambers from those four states. I ran into Travis Stevens, which he is the CEO, President of the Joplin Chamber, and they do a scenario where they have a vendor networking portion plus a general public. Got some ideas how we might be able to implicate that for the future. I think the vendors want an opportunity to kind of have that self-networking time, so we may work that into somehow next year. Another chamber out of Arkansas, their expo was beginning to, was kind of sagging a little bit, so they ended up tying it some food truck festivals with it. That seemed very, very well. So we're gonna continue to improve the Showcase Ozark to make it a great event for the Ozark community, and it's good to be able to go down and go to those conferences with chambers that are like-minded. I even ran into some old friends of Eric's from Blue Springs, and we had to do a selfie and send it to him, and it was a whole moment there, but it was kind of fun. So it is neat to get to meet these other people from across the region. So it was good that the chamber could pay for me to go down there. Next big thing we have coming up is next week is the golf tournament. We could use some more teams. So if anybody's looking to play some golf, let me know. We need a few more four-person teams, but it's gonna be a nice tournament. We have some nice prizes, some nice activities. Just hope we get a day like today next week. I've been getting a lot of calls, just FYI. The chamber does support that citywide garage sale in the fall. There are so many of them happening this time of year in different cities. So if anybody asks you, the dates are September the 11th, 12th, and 13th, and we'll have the online digital map. We'll make it free for the residents to post it, and then we'll send that digital map out a few days ahead of time. And honestly, the web traffic on that map last year was very, very high, so a lot of people coming into Ozark looking to hopefully spend money here and bless some of our citizens and maybe put a little extra money in their pocket. And of course, that's just a couple of our big events that we have coming up. We are also fully supporting all the other events that we're all aware of that are getting ready to happen as we get into, you know, May, June, July, August, September, so October, November parade. That is very important for the chamber's mission is to be that vehicle that they could talk about it, that they can actually, to be able to promote it, and we want to cross-promote those events as well. Here's some fun news. Since the beginning of the year, I did a little report for our Board of Directors the other day. This is really good growth. We've had thirty, for the first four months of the 2025, we've had 36 new members join. That's averaging about nine per month, and that's a really good stat for a chamber our size. Now, we do have, we have had a few that have not renewed. They've had, for some reason, went out of business, or maybe they moved on, or just whatever that reason is. But our net's been about four, five, six, somewhere right around there a month, which is really steady growth. But you know me, I want to keep growing and be a blessing for the Ozark community and find good quality members that want to be a part of this chamber. So if you're out and about in the community, I just gave Chandra a whole bunch of cards to put up front, and Jeremy's gonna take some over to the Public Works and the Planning and Zoning Building for me. Grab one of those, put them in your pocket. I challenge you to ask a business, say, hey, have you thought about joining the Ozark Chamber? That would be a good blessing to us because growth helps us bring new energy, brings new excitement. The other day, at the First Friday Coffee, the poo squad, who was there? I think a couple of you guys were there. The poo squad, a new business. They go around pick up poop out of your yard. So we'll take anybody, right? Not anybody, but yeah, I think you see the funniness of that. So all in all, really, things are going very, very well for the Ozark Chamber. Oh, other big news, we did hire, as most of you are probably aware of, a part-time assistant, somebody who is a native to this area, who has served this community very, very well, and has been a blessing for me so far, which is Patty Quezenberry, and she will continue to be a blessing. Not so far, she will be. It's nice because we do get, you know, just like you guys, probably at your front desk, you get a lot of community calls, and when she help answer the phone, she knows the answers, right? So she knows through history about this community, and so she can be another asset to our chamber. So that's my report for tonight. Any questions so far? Anything you guys want to ask?
Any questions?
Okay. Well, guys, I appreciate you very much. Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here tonight. Okay. Moving on to, there's no first reading of bills tonight, so we'll go on. We do have a resolution, Resolution 2021.
Your Honor, I move that we read Resolution 2021 by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. There's a motion that we read by title only, Resolution Number 2021. That motion was made by Alderman Galloway, second by Alderman Aiken. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Resolution 2021, do so by show of hands, please. And that does carry.
A resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Ozark, Missouri approving one appointment to the land clearance for redevelopment authority.
Okay. Do we have any comments from our city administrator regarding this? Okay. Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
With respect to this, Alderman, were there any other applicants on this?
Not for this particular one, no, but we are going to, you'll be getting an email from me tomorrow because there's three more positions that are open. As I said, I'm gonna be asking for your suggestions because we do need suggestions for these three open positions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. But since we do, I need open this to the public. Is anyone here who is to speak for Resolution 2021? This is your time. I'm opening it to the public. Okay. Anyone here who is against Resolution 2021? I'm not seeing movement, so I'm gonna close it this time to the public. Again, any questions from the board? I'm not seeing any, so.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Resolution 2021. The motion was made by Alderman Galloway. It was second by Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2021, do so by show of hands. And it does carry. Okay, thank you. We now draw attention to the second readings of our bills for tonight, and our first one we'll look at is Bill Number 3658.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill Number 3658 on its second reading by title and a brief description only.
Okay, there's a second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we place Bill Number 3658 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, second by Alderman Snyder. All in favor on the motion to discuss Bill 3658, do so by show of hands. That does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri amending the corporate boundaries of the City of Ozark, Missouri by annexing one parcel, approximately one acre, located at 6101 North 23rd Street.
Okay. Comments from our community development director, Randall Whitman?
Good evening. I didn't have anything additional to add since our, since the first reading on this bill, but be glad to answer any questions I can.
Okay. Any questions for Director Whitman? I'm not seeing. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Bill Number 3658 as ordinance Number 25-035.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Bill 3658 to become ordinance 25-035. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, second by Alderman Snyder. Real call, please.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Now, we draw attention to Bill Number 3659.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place Bill Number 3659 on its second reading by title and brief description only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is that we adopt, excuse me, the motion is that we present Bill 3659 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, it was second by Alderman Aiken. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3659, do so by show of hands, please. Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri amending the zoning code and official map by changing the zoning classification of certain real property located at 6101 North 23rd Street.
Okay. And we'll welcome back Director Whitman.
This is a rezoning of the property that you just annexed. Again, I don't have anything new to report. No protests or nothing reported yet, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay. I'm not seeing. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Your Honor, I move that we adopt Bill Number 3659 as ordinance Number 25-036.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Bill 3659 to become ordinance 25-036. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, second by Alderman Snyder. Real call, please.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now, we draw attention now to Bill Number 3660.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we place Bill 3660 on its second reading by title only, please.
Okay, is it?
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is we place Bill Number 3660 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3660, do so by show of hands, please. And does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers LLC for street micro-surfacing, pavement, and construction improvements.
Okay. Now, we'll welcome to the platform, Public Work Director Jeremy Parsons.
Good evening, Board. Same deal here. I've got nothing new to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions on the next five bills.
Okay. Any questions for our director? Thank you, sir. Okay. I think we're good to go. Okay.
Motion to enact Bill Number 3660 as ordinance 25-037, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is to enact Bill Number 3660 to become ordinance 25-037. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Snyder. Real call, please.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Now, we'll draw attention to the next bill, which is Bill Number 3661.
And, Your Honor, I'll move that we place Bill 3661 on second reading by title only, please.
And second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is we place Bill Number 3661 on its second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, second by Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting to discuss Bill 3661, do so by show of hands. And it does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Hamilton &amp; Dad Incorporated for Robertson Street water main improvements.
Once again, we'll welcome Director Parsons.
Yeah, same deal here. I will say that we're really excited about getting this project started, and once we have the pre-construction meeting and get everything finalized, assuming this goes through tonight, we will be having a public meeting to kind of inform the public of what we'll be doing over the next few months, so.
Are we talking about this fall for actual construction? I mean, the?
Yeah. Construction, at this point, will also kind of go into the proposed street improvement.
Yes.
Because it's still gotta come before you want.
Okay, understand. Any questions for Director?
I did have one question on this. It just occurred to me as I was reading it. So this project will ultimately involve funding from the federal highway department. Is that right?
That's correct. The next phase of this will be the street and sidewalk, which we've been awarded TAP funding for, and that'll help basically supplement the cost of that roadway improvement.
Okay. I recall a couple weeks ago seeing a headline that the Department of Transportation was cutting funding for road dieting projects. Does that affect us at all?
I mean, I should say, very fortunately, this does not impact us whatsoever. The programming has been completed and the funding has been obligated, so we're in a good position right now.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Your Honor, I'll move that we enact Bill Number 3661 as ordinance 25-038, please.
And we second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we enact Bill 3661 as ordinance 25-038. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. Real call, please.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Yep. Now, we'll move on to Bill Number 3662.
I move that we place Bill 3662 on second reading by title only.
And second by?
Second.
The motion is we place Bill Number 3662 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, second by Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3662, do so by show of hands. And does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri authorizing the city to enter into a contract with ALMI Enterprises LLC for the purchase of a fabric bio solids cake storage building.
And welcome back.
Nothing new here. Pretty simple, straightforward bill, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Director Parsons on this bill? I'm not seeing, sir. Thank you.
I move that we adopt Bill 3662 as ordinance 25-039.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Bill 3662 to become ordinance 25-039. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. Real call, please.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to Bill Number 3663.
I move that we place Bill 3663 on second reading by title only.
And second by?
Second.
The motion is we place Bill Number 3663 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3663, do so by show of hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Central Power Systems and Services LLC for the purchase of a generator.
Welcome back.
Yes. Nothing new on this one either, but happy to answer questions.
Yes, Alderman Snyder.
Hey, Jeremy, what was the life expectancy and the warranty on that generator?
So I don't have the warranty information in front of me. Hopefully, it was in the packet, but I typically, we get a one-year anything replaced and up to a five-year on the major components of that. But I can double-check and send that to you.
Gotcha. What's the life on that generator?
The actual life on a generator, we've been getting between 15 and 25 years on generators. We have them on a preventative maintenance program and an exercising program. So Norton Power Systems comes out and checks everything, and it's been very beneficial to us. And if we need them, they're on our on-call contract, so.
So a solid investment, is that correct?
Yes, and I mean, I should say fortunately, but unfortunately, we are required by DNR to have these backup generators in case we lose electricity like we did last week. We can't get into a situation where that lift station goes down, and then we have what they call an SSO, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Alderman Galloway?
I think your materials, Jeremy, say, five years, 3,000-hour basic battery warranty. Does that sound right?
Yes. I knew there was a vibe in there. Yep.
Does it also come with an internal critical-grade exhaust silencer?
I'm pretty sure it does. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was important to me.
Okay. Okay. I'm gonna ask, what does that mean?
It keeps it quiet.
Okay.
We try to find equipment, especially in residential areas, if we can't, if we won't compromise the integrity, we do try to keep it as quiet as possible.
Anyone else for Director Parsons? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Well, I was hesitant, but now I'm gonna move that we enact Bill 3663 as ordinance 25-040.
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we enact Bill 3663 to become ordinance 25-040. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. Real call.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
We have five i-votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, draw attention to our House Bill of the evening. It's Bill Number 3664.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we place Bill 3664 on second reading by title only.
And seconded by?
Second.
The motion is we place Bill Number 3664 on its second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3664, do by show of hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the City of Ozark, Missouri authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Independent Electric Machinery Company for specialized motor, pump, and mixer with Independent Electric Machinery Company for specialized motor, pump, and mixer repair and maintenance services.
Welcome back.
I do have something new to add to this. If you remember at the last meeting, Alderman Campbell asked about the location of the business, so I followed up with an email to him, but I wanted to let you all know. They're based out of the KC metro area, but they have offices in Springfield, Wichita, Joplin, they've got a big presence in this area. So anything that we would need would come from the Springfield office, which is great.
Very good. Any questions for Director Parson? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I make a motion that we adopt Bill 3664 as ordinance 25-041.
And second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Bill number 3664 to become ordinance 25-041. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken, it was second by Alderman Metcalf. Roll call, please.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell is absent. Alderman Hutcheson?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
We have five I-votes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We now turn our attention to our city administrator, Eric Johnson.
I'd just like to ask, who here doesn't like to win an award? You have this at your place this evening regarding Garrison Springs. I'd like to read this, take a moment from our press release. "Ozark, Missouri, the City of Ozark is proud to announce that Garrison Springs Community Forest has been awarded the 2025 Innovation Award in the Large City category by the Missouri Municipal League. This prestigious award honors outstanding municipal projects in cities with populations between 15,000 and 30,000, and showcases forward-thinking solutions and deliver lasting community impact. The Missouri Municipal League's innovation awards celebrate outstanding, outstanding projects that improve the quality of life in communities across Missouri through innovation, creativity, and collaboration. Ozark's Garrison Springs Community Forest stood out for its bold approach to environmental conservation, sustainable land management, and public recreation, and the park, as you know, was officially reopened to the public in August 2024 following the renovations." I can tell you that we were thrilled to get the news last week, and the competition for these awards is very stiff. There are a number of communities throughout the state that go after innovation awards, so I would just like to say on behalf of Maria and her team, Ben Ward, I believe Ben had a lot to do with this. I think the application for this project was between five and seven pages long. Am I, am I close to being right? Thereabouts. And Hayden with, and his park staff touched this. There were a number of different employees that had a participation in putting this application together, and I'm just thrilled that we received this news, and we will officially receive the award in the fall at the Missouri Municipal League Fall Conference. I believe it's going to be in St. Louis. So very excited to present you with some very positive news. That's really very exciting. Yes, absolutely. And while we're clapping hands, we can also take the time, this week, you may not be aware, is recognized by the State of Missouri as the Missouri Local Government Week, and so take a moment to thank your first responders, your police, your fire, your emergency medical personnel, your public work staff, your parks, any employees that are providing services, whether they're county, city, state, well, it's local government. Take the opportunity to say thank you for, to those men and women who are responding and providing for those very important local services. So I'm thrilled to be providing very positive news for you tonight, and I know that Mary Edden is going to be presenting some financial information here in just a moment, so that concludes my remarks, Your Honor.
Okay. Any questions for our city administrator from the board? Thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, we'll draw attention now to our annual financial report. We all have a copy on our desk.
So I have lots of numbers for you. There will be a test, you have to know it. This is, so this is the 2024, 12/31/2024, very brief financial report presented to you, the board and mayor. I'm pleased to submit this report, final, final report for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. This report includes a very high-level comparison of the budget to actual revenues and expenditures. The fiscal year '24 revenue budget for all funds totaled was $59.4 million and comprised of the following: $37.3 million in estimated revenues, $22.1 million was projected carryover from the previous year, and the expense budget totaled $44.1 million, which left a projected ending fund balance of $15.3 million. Now that was projected almost 13 months before the end of the year, so there's going to be some variation every year there is, and we expect that. Fortunately, this year, the fund balance went up $6.3 million and was $21.6 million at the end of the year instead of $15.3. That was primarily due to expenses not being as high as we had anticipated, and I've told you before, we always budget very conservatively. We anticipate the worst-case scenario, we budget revenues low, and we budget expenses high, so that we always have enough money at the end of the year, and we hope that it does just what it did, is more than we had anticipated. Some of the line items, and there are lots of them, I'm not going to try and read every single one to you, but for instance, the Chadwick Flyer and a couple of public works projects are in there, and we have to budget those at the full value of the contract, even though we may know at the time that they're not going to fulfill the contract that year, but in order to get it signed and get the monies committed from the various sources, such as the Federal Highway Program, that has to be budgeted in full. So that rolls over into that fund balance as well. It may be in next year's budget as well, but that's a part of the contract. The, there was a 300 grant match expense. We had a line item for grant match expense that we didn't use. We either put it in another line item or we didn't need it last year, so that was $300,000. But those are some examples of things that caused us to have lower expenses, and, I mean, that, this is for all the funds, so when you talk about all of them, it's the general fund, the water fund, park, pool, you know, community center, project, stormwater, all of them. The general fund revenues exceeded the adopted budget by $1.9 million, representing a 16% increase for the '24 fiscal year. Sales tax, which is our largest revenue source, came in at about $6.4 million. The general fund's fiscal year, year-end was $11.4 million, which was $4.8 million higher than we had projected, which is a part of that previous chart, the 6.3. So overall, the general fund revenues performed as projected with major categories, including property tax, permits, fees, inspections, interest income, and franchise coming in slightly at or above budgets. And again, there are lots of line items, but I won't try to read you all of those. The general fund expenses were adopted at $15.5 million with a projected ending fund balance of $6.6. The actual year-end expenses totaled $13.5 million, resulting in the actual fund balance of $11.4. So the revenues came in about $2 million higher, and the expenses were about $2 million less, giving us the additional $4.8 million in fund balance. Overall, the city's nine funds, including the general fund, water fund, park, stormwater, the three largest funds, performed as expected. In most cases, conservative revenue and expenditure projections led to revenues exceeding the budget, and expenses coming in are below projections. The city ended 2024 with a total actual fund balance of $21.6 million. The fiscal year '24 year-end projection was $15.3. The actual results were 41% higher than we had projected, which is kind of what we expected, maybe not quite that much, but that's what we want. That last chart, three, I do want to point out that that is comparing the actual for 2024 to the appropriated budget that you adopted for the 2025, so it's moving, it's shifting the focus a little bit there. If, and, and that is projected, again, to go down about $8 million. The, there are a lot of big projects that are in that budget, public works, both street and water and sewer have a lot of big projects going on, and again, some of that's related to the maximum amount of those contracts being in that budget, even though we know that we may not get to fulfill all of them in '25, but in order to get the contract approved, you have to put it in there. So that, that's really the biggest change. We don't have any ARPA money, and here, there is $700,000 that's allocated for '25, but that's the end of it. There won't be any more, as far as we know. So in summary, we are in good financial standing. Most of our fund balances remain healthy with cash reserves, and most funds covering at least six to eight months, which is what is recommended. General fund revenues exceeded the adopted budget by $1.9 million. General fund expenses came in approximately 10% under budget, and the year-end fund balance, again, was $21.6 million, so that's pretty healthy for City of Ozark. This report only reflects a snapshot of the financial activity during the year, and in accordance with city policy, an external auditing firm has started work on the fiscal year '24 audit. We expect to present the final results to you in July, so we'll have it back soon. And I would like to thank the board for your continued support and stewardship of Ozark's financial resources. I look forward to continuing our work together to serve the community. Thank you. Any questions?
Not a question, just a comment. Good work.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report, appreciate the work putting it together. Again, this does not happen, I know, overnight, so do appreciate that very much. Okay. Okay. Any final comments from the board tonight? Okay. I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is to adjourn, that motion was made by Aldman Snyder, it was second by Aldman Metcalf. All in favor of voting on this motion for adjournment, do so by show of hands, please, and it stands, and we are adjourned.